All right, if I could have everyone's attention, I'm going to bring the Finance and Law Subcommittee to order. It's Wednesday, September 1st, 2021. And Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fury.
Present.
And myself being present. Let's see, first item on the agenda is put my glasses on. I can't see. No, I can't find them either. Probably on my head. Let's see. Looks like student activities, and there aren't any. So we'll move on to the second item, which I think Brenda's going to take over. We got some quarterly budget updates. Ms. Moynihan?
I'll save you, Mr. Martin, while you look for your glasses. This is the FY21 Quarterly Budget Updates, which really is the final quarter for last school year for the FY21. Again, final reports for our line item, which is appropriation, the revolving, and also the grants. So the first one that we have in front of you is the line item appropriation. And the previous school committee, way back in May, the school committee had approved to move the certain monies that have been in certain line accounts that had a surplus to the ones that we had gone over. And as you can see, I went ahead and balanced out each of the line items where we did go ahead and spend our entire appropriation. So we've expended 100% of our appropriation of $90 million, 90.4. Any questions on the line item?
You want to elaborate on that a little bit, why everything says 100%?
The reason why is again, so some of the line items in the previous one when we had it under the quarter three, let's just say that for Teaching and Supplies, line 2410, we'll say that maybe we had spent more money than we had appropriated. So under the appropriation, we may have spent out, again, for 2410, it says maybe $710,000. At that time, at quarter three, we may have spent more than that. So what we had ahead, and we went to balance them out. So where we had more monies that we spent, we took the monies that we still had a surplus on a line, and we just transferred those into the lines. So in other words, it's one pot of money, and then the pot of money is divided up per line. So although a certain line may have had more money spent, it still had in the pot of the money, we still had money depending upon in a different line. So we just shifted the money where there was a surplus into a line item that we overspent in that specific line.
Thank you. I just want to add to that a little bit. If you recall, when we built this budget, she's referring to, we, the school committee authorized the superintendent to use revolving money to make the budget whole if our appropriation wasn't enough. So basically, what you're saying is, we used money like revolving, I'm just using that as an example, if we needed to, to make those lines whole.
Correct. We didn't use any.
Bottom line is, whatever the city gives us, we spend it. Because we can't give it back.
If I could, Joe.
What's that?
If I could.
Mr. Cabral.
Yeah, so as Mrs. Moynihan mentioned, I think it was the April meeting where the school committee authorized the administration, you know, to make sure that we balanced any lines that were in deficit. So Mrs. Moynihan, again with my supervision and my authorization, we worked together, and she was able to make sure that each line balanced out, that any line that was in a deficit was balanced to a zero deficit by moving funds from a line that was in surplus into a line that was in deficit. So that's why the budget does balance out. And you are correct, Mr. Martin, we had approximately $5.6 million in revenue that we were authorized to utilize, composed of circuit breaker, circuit breaker carryover, revolving funds. We also had McKinney-Bento funds, and then we also received funding from the Cable Commission. So utilizing all that different funding plus our appropriation, we do have a balanced budget for fiscal '21.
Thank you. I just want to add one thing to that. You might say, well, gee, why don't you give the money back to the city? In a sense, we can't, because if we were to give the money back to the city, we wouldn't be meeting net school spending. And that's state requirement. So whatever the city gives us, we spend. And then if we need more money, which was authorized by the school committee, we use money from those McKinney-Bento, revolving, in those different areas that we have, that are not part of the city budget. Thank you, Brenda. I didn't mean to elaborate, but I just wanted, it's people in the audience, and I just wanted to, and it's people listening, and I just wanted them to kind of understand why those are all 100%. Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we should also mention that we spend considerable amount more than what the city gives us, because the special accounts that we have have enabled us to do.
What we do.
I mean, some of our projects, like athletic renovations and different physical things within the school, things that we don't submit for, school building assistance, and that's something we have. So we're actually a pretty profitable outfit.
That's it?
Yeah.
The second item that we are looking at is the quarter four, again, final report for the revolving. And if you look at our revolving accounts, again, through June 30th, 2021, we are carrying over to the new school year of $4.5 million. I don't think you need me to go through each one, but does anyone have any questions on any of those?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. None of that money is encumbered right now, correct?
You can see there, there is $0 encumbered.
Just double check.
We had, we had encumbered money for the turf field and possibly the track.
We let that.
But we put it back.
That's right.
Because of.
During the COVID.
Because of what happened with the environment.
March 2020.
The third report is the, again, quarter four, which is the final budget report for the grants from through June 30th, 2021. And as you can see, currently, we have a balance of, remaining grant balance of $9.9 million. Some of these budgets, some of these, some of these funds or some of these grants, you'll see that there are grant balances, and the grant has ended, but those grants will go ahead and roll over to the next fiscal year. So you will not be seeing any loss on specific grants, like the one that you may see, like the Title I grant. We can go ahead and roll it over until the next school year. So again, currently, right now, we have, at the end of June 30th, we had $9.9 million. And after that, of course, we've been receiving other funds, other ESSR funds and all, and that will be in my report coming up for quarter one when we do that later on in the fall.
Question, Brenda. And just for everyone's notification, on the second page of that, it says, Martin, $15,447.75. That's not going to me. That's Martin School. Go ahead,
Brenda. Motion, motion that we've received and placed on file FY21 Quarterly Budget Updates, three of them.
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, and any questions? All right. So moving on to item number.
On the motion.
Oh, I should call the motion, shouldn't I?
Be nice.
Mr. Fury.
All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
What's that?
Been a long night already. Did you call, did you call the rule?
No.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Fury.
Both present and yes on the motion.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Martin votes yes. Item number three, bills payable. We have two. Both are fairly large. FY22, which is the year we're in, is $493,150.68. And FY21 is probably, I won't say anything, I'll let Brenda explain it, $556,460.15. So would you want to elaborate a little bit on why FY21 is that much money? Because in the past, it's been several thousand dollars here or there.
We usually are able to go ahead and encumber fundings to go and finish off. You'll also see FY21 on our agenda through August and possibly even through September. So again, some of our invoices that we had encumbered funds by the end of June, when the fiscal year is over, we hadn't received an invoice for them. So again, we had ordered some of the items, the invoice had not, excuse me, the items were not received, so we couldn't pay for them. So now they have been received, and that is why you will see that we have a large FY21 payment to be done in the month of August. And of course, we didn't have, we only had one school committee meeting in the month of July.
In the past, that's been known as the incumbents list.
Correct.
And I know when I was working, you couldn't spend money off the incumbents list until the city approved it. And I think the city auditor approved it either last week or last night.
Right.
When I say, yeah, I'm talking about everybody's budget.
Right.
Not just the school department.
Correct.
So now that it's been approved, and we get the product in, we can spend that money.
Correct.
And finally, motion to.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve the warrant bills payable, and the amount of. $1,049,610.83 as presented.
So you combined the two?
I combined the two.
Motion made seconded?
Seconded, yeah.
Motion made seconded, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion so voted. And for the whole facilities update.
And I know we're running late for on time and all, but I do want to say thank you to specific people who have gone ahead and helped us opening up our school for the school year. So as we opened up our school year today, we had been, our schools are cleaned and sanitized by all of our custodians. Our groundskeepers went ahead and spruced up our fronts with flowers at the entrances, and school supplies were sent out and delivered by our storekeepers, Pete and Nick. So, and so that is, I definitely, there's been a combined effort by a large group of people that have been working behind the scenes to give, to get our schools opened and ready for our teachers and students. So I thank them very much. Also, the Taunton Alternative High School is now at Hopewell, and that was a huge effort, again, for cleaning out some of Hopewell's stuff, moving it to the third floor where we're not using anything. And then Principal Delaney from the Alternative High School, Pete, Nick, and the grounds crew, and some of our custodians in cleaning that school and getting it ready for the Alternative High School to be at Hopewell in a very short period of time. So again, people behind the scenes that we don't normally see, because we just opened the doors and everything is there, and I can't thank them enough as well. So thank you to that group of people. And the Taunton High School athletic field, just to let you know that I did meet with Arsene from NESRA to start getting those, the documents ready to go out to bid for the athletic field. He said he would take about three months to get those budget documents ready to go. So it doesn't seem like we'll have those budget documents until November to go out to bid. So it looks like that we would be going ahead and starting, if all goes well, we'd be starting with the renovation of, replacement of the high school turf field and the track out into the spring. So we are starting to do that. So I'll provide you more information as we get those budget documents and all going forward. Lastly, we had the city building inspection about a week or two ago. There were 40 sightings that were done throughout our entire school system. But I just want to say that kudos to our principals and custodians. We only had three items that were cited that has to be corrected by Taunton Public Schools, and I can tell you that all three have been corrected. So we have had a great report from the building, building department. So we're very, very excited. So I thank those individuals as well. So that concludes my facilities update.
Mr. Cabral.
I also feel that it'd be appropriate to recognize Mrs. Moynihan for her efforts in overseeing, that our grounds and facilities are in great condition and ready for our students to return to in-person learning. So Brenda, I just want to thank you on behalf of the Taunton Public Schools and all the staff members you oversee for doing an outstanding job and helping to get our schools ready. Thank you.
I noticed the mom's on the way in, which just came out.
It's the little things, Mr. Martin. It's the little things.
It is. Makes a big difference.
That's right.
That's item number four. Anything else for the, good of the order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, all is in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
All set? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation and the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan, please remain standing.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Any moment of silence?
Do you want to do the roll call first, or you want the moment of silence?
Moment of silence.
Okay. We have a moment of silence for two individuals that we recently lost. First one is Kiara Miranda, who passed away August 28th in a car accident. She was a 2020 graduate of Taunton High School. We would like to ask you to keep her family in your thoughts and in your prayers during this difficult time. It's always tragic to lose a young person like her. The other woman is Avis DeCastro. On the other end of the spectrum, Avis was 94 years old, the mother of 10 children. She had 24 grandchildren, 42 great-grandchildren. She left quite a legacy. She was also the mother of Helen Sylvia, a longtime teacher at Bennett School. And oddly enough, she started out her career as a switch, as a telephone operator, and then went back to work after taking care of her family and worked the night shift at Morton Hospital so that she could be home taking care of her family. And she actually retired from that job in 1995. So our thoughts and sympathies go out to the DeCastro family also.
Moment of silence. Thank you all. Please be seated. Mrs. Fagan, please call the rule.
Ms. Doherty.
Present.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Fury.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
Mr. Demello.
Present.
And Chairman Souza.
Present. Approval of the minutes, August 11th, 2021.
Thought approval.
Second.
Other motion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Public input, Wendy, we have no public input. I have the sheet. We have no, we have no public input for tonight. Moving on to item D, superintendent's, excuse me, superintendent's report, Superintendent Cabral.
Thank you, Chairman Souza. So tonight, I have the distinct pleasure and honor of welcoming to the Taunton Public Schools and introducing to our entire school system, Mr. Scott Holcomb. Mr. Scott Holcomb will be serving as the interim principal of Taunton High School. Mr. Holcomb formally began his new role as the interim principal of Taunton High School on August 1st, 2021. Mr. Holcomb brings considerable knowledge and experience in curriculum and instructional leadership, having previously served in numerous administrative capacities in multiple school systems. I am pleased to have Mr. Holcomb as part of our administrative team. He is a tremendous asset to the Taunton High School community as well as the city of Taunton. Mr. Holcomb brings approximately 14 years of administrative experience to our district, most recently serving as the superintendent of the North Ardebeau Public Schools. He has, he has also worked as an assistant superintendent and a high school principal in North Ardebeau Public Schools, and a high school assistant principal in the Secong Public Schools. Additionally, he has worked as an adjunct professor at Roger Williams University, and as a science teacher at Hopkinton and Bellingham High School. In total, Mr. Holcomb brings over 25 years of experience in education to our school system. While serving as the principal of North Ardebeau Public Schools, Mr. Holcomb is credited with reducing the dropout rates to an historic low. He is also credited with increasing advanced placement cost offerings in student enrollment in AP courses by one over, by over 100%, while also increasing student achievement in AP tests. The move, in moving his high school in MCAS accountability level to one, while increasing overall scores in subpopulations and the overall population, student population. During his tenure as principal, he also redesigned the student cost schedule and the selection process, enabling students to receive schedules prior to summer vacation, thus reducing summer scheduling conflicts. Mr. Holcomb holds a certificate of advanced grad, advanced educational specialization in administration from Boston College, a master's degree in teaching, and a bachelor's degree in biology, chemistry from Bridgewater State University. He has also currently taken courses at the University of New England to obtain his doctor in, doctor in education, and is certified as a superintendent, assistant superintendent, business manager, principal, assistant principal, let me catch my breath, as well as, as high school. So it was a great pleasure that I welcomed Mr. Scott Holcomb, Taunton High School interim principal.
Scott, come on, come on up to the microphone over here, Scott, and say a few words if you'd like. They're very easy to operate. Hit the button and it turns green.
You can tell, like, Mr. Holcomb and I have a lot in common. The kids confuse us when they see us standing together, because we have the same height.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral and School Committee. I'm humbled by your comments. Normally, as leaders, we talk about other people besides ourselves. So thank you very much for that introduction. I want to thank Superintendent Cabral first and foremost for affording me this opportunity to work in Taunton. And I want to thank the School Committee also for empowering Superintendent Cabral for making that hire. So today, I just wanted to bring to your attention a couple of things. People have asked me all day long, how, how is the school? I think a lot of times, we think about the school as a building, and it's far more than a building, right? It's the people. So I want to take a few moments just to tell you about the kind of people that you have around you that the superintendent and his team have created. So we'll start with the students first and foremost. You know, people have told me about the students in Taunton being wonderful people. It's one thing to hear, it's another thing to actually see it in action. So today, I just want to tell you about the cafeteria. And in the cafeteria, it can be overwhelming, right? Hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds of students in the cafeteria for five different lunches. Imagine being an eighth grader going in there for the first time ever receiving your lunch. Can be unnerving. Where do I pick up my lunch? How do I do things? I saw this one young lady, she was standing with her lunch, and she looked clearly like she needed some help. One of our girls from the softball team jumped out of her seat. I was about to talk to this young lady, help her out. Before I could utter two words, she said, hey, why don't you come sit with me? Our table is right over here with these girls. Come sit with me. And I helped usher her along, and she sat down. It wasn't one time I saw that. There were multiple times in that lunchroom that I saw our good students of Taunton High School reach out to students that were in need and express a sincere act of kindness to them. In the hallway, when students couldn't find their classrooms, because the place is huge, right? Third largest high school in the state of Massachusetts. Those students, upperclassmen, would help those kids out. Where are you right now? I'm looking for room D 303. And they would take the time out of their day to show the eighth graders and other students where those rooms were. But beyond the students, I'll make one more thing about the students. We're going to do a, an orientation for the eighth graders. And I don't know many people right now, because I'm brand new. But your good students, they reached out to me and said, is it possible to come into the orientation and to help with the presentation? We're student leaders. Unsolicited, no adult was there poking and prodding them to reach out. So you're creating tomorrow's leaders from some sort of a culture and climate that you've created in this city where these students feel empowered. Then you look at your teachers. I can't tell you how many people on staff with the teachers have reached out to me, welcoming me, making me feel like part of a family, doing above and beyond selfless acts for the students, selfless acts towards me. Leadership team, John's leadership team, the high school's leadership team, the whole community is amazing. Parents, the PTP, we have to give them a shout out, Parent Teacher Partnership. Went to the high school this morning. I can't count the number of people who were talking about the way the entrance looked towards Taunton High School. I don't know how their arm feels right now, these parents, because what they did, you could have landed a helicopter in the front of the high school. They, they took sidewalk chalk, orange and different colors, but this massive paw print for tigers was out in front of Taunton High School. It must have taken them hours upon hours upon hours to make that a welcoming, warm environment, that entranceway into the high school. And all the teachers and all the students were talking about that. What's it all a reflection of? A school culture, a school climate, a city's culture, a city's climate. And I couldn't be more proud to be part of that culture and climate right now. And I want to thank everyone who's made me feel welcome. And we've got a great, great year ahead of us with a lot of great changes that are going to help students and parents and help grow this city. So thank you, Superintendent, for everything. Thank you, School Committee.
Thank you again, and welcome again.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I was in the hot seat for questions or.
Any questions, any questions? You're going to escape easy.
That's beautiful. Thank you. I like it. All right.
Continue, Mr. Cabral.
So I also thought it would be appropriate, since there is a staffing update in the school committee packet, that I would provide you with a staffing update. So I, so I am providing you with an update on our 2021, 2022 school year staffing as we prepare to bring students back to school today. The Human Resource Department worked together to post, recruit, interview, and onboard staff throughout the summer while implementing current and new operating procedures within, within the department. On May 1st, 59 postings were posted for the 2021, 2022 school year, with an additional 173 positions posted throughout the months of June, July, and August. Of the 232 positions posted, 86 are classroom educators and 63 were new 2021, 2022 positions funded by the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or ESSR II grants. As of Friday, August 27th, 70 educated positions were filled, with many more in the pipeline to be processed. The Human Resource Department has set a lofty goal to be fully staffed by September 1st. I am thrilled to report that eight are considered diverse candidates out of the 70 educators, while 11 diverse candidates appointed to non-teaching positions. So we are slowly but surely making a dent towards our goal to have a more diversified staff. While fulfilling all our staffing needs, the Human Resource Department also implemented new tracking system for all new hires and departing employees. With the new tracking database, the Taunton Public Schools can capture data, including diversity initiatives in hiring, cost savings, budget analysis, and hiring needs for specific schools. The department has also expanded its external recruitment efforts through the use of school spring, teachers lounge, and handshake, with teachers lounge being an exciting new platform with a vision to drive unprecedented student outcomes by greatly diversifying the people, thoughts, and actions of the educational workforce in the Boston area and beyond. Since being fully staffed as of last June, the Human Resource Department has also improved the overall functionality of the department by handling all personnel matters in a more timely, efficient manner. In addition, the Human Resource Department has added new procedures for tracking and hiring, and strives to continue to improve upon our diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts for all our staff. So I do plan that sometime later in the school year to have the Human Resource Department provide you with a presentation at a future meeting to highlight some of these accomplishments and some of the new systems they have in place. I also wanted to make you aware of a facility update at the East Taunton Elementary School. So you may recall, back in February 2021, East Taunton Elementary School suffered a major water leak. The damage was pretty extensive, and it resulted in the need of a new fire alarm enunciator panel. But the fire alarm system was also. But the fire alarm system was also damaged and is currently, it was also damaged and it's also kind of out, it's somewhat outdated, thus repairs and replacement parts are not feasible. Therefore, the entire new fire alarm system will need to be replaced and installed. The COVID nineteen pandemic has caused significant delays in receiving supplies for this installation. Insurance claims in locating vent, locating a vendor have also been barriers in finding a solution. The initial steps for this project have been very challenging and laborious. Currently, supplies are arriving in very short bursts due to supply chain issues throughout the market. As the school year begins, work will need to be done during the school day. I want to stress that the work that is being done at the East Taunton Elementary School will not infringe or cause any delays or inhibit any of the teaching and learning that takes place in the building. The work will be done around the students when teachers are on planning period, before school, after school, to make sure that they have a fully functioning fire suppression system. However, the system they have in place does work, and it does allow us to have students and staff in the building functioning safely. So we are happy to report that we will have a brand-new fire alarm system, and I also want to stress to the public that, you know, we've met with the building department, who has met with the fire department and Captain Bastis, and we are very confident and feel safe about having students in the building. And long story short, we will have a new fire alarm system in that school.
Mr., my.
If I could just add, it was either the, Easton Elementary opened in nineteen ninety-seven, and either the late nineties or the early two thousands, we had a major water leak in Easton. One of the columns hadn't been insulated properly, froze, water came in, and basically destroyed the library.
The library.
The library furniture, all replaced with the same type of furniture because the librarian at the time insisted that it be quality furniture. So I just wanted to just make the comment that that's the second major water leak we've had at Easton Elementary. Was this roof-related or?
One of the fires.
Fires. Okay. So hopefully, that's it for East Taunton as far as water problems.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, Mr. Cabral. So I wanted to provide you with an update regarding the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, public health masking update. So during the two, during August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-one, a special meeting of the Board of Education, Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, the board voted to declare existent circumstances towards student learning time regulations. This resulted in the authorization of DESI Commissioner to require masks for all public school students ages five and above and staff through at least October first, two thousand twenty-one. The focus of this requirement is toward additional measures of student safety at this time. The requirements from the Commissioner are guided by consultation with medical experts and state health officials. In immediate effect, public school students, all staff, and all visitors are required to mask while indoors in schools. Masks are not required outdoors. A mask should also cover an individual's nose and mouth entirely. The Commissioner strongly recommended that students younger than the age of five also follow these guidelines. Any students or staff that cannot wear a mask for medical reasons or, and students who cannot wear a mask for behavioral reasons are exempted from this requirement. An alternative for students with medical or behavioral needs may be a face shield or transparent mask. Meals and outdoor recess provide built-in mask breaks. The department also suggests that when mask breaks do occur, windows should be open for students, should, and students should be outside as much as possible. Participation in elective courses such as the use of wind instruments may allow students to remove their masks. Student athletes and coaches are to wear masks when participating indoors. Families are advised to provide their students with masks before arriving at school. Buses are included in this requirement. Districts are advised to seek accommodations for those that need additional support to wear a mask throughout the school day. Keeping students connected with the school is particularly important for fall two thousand twenty-one. Per Commissioner Riley's mandate, if after October first, two thousand twenty-one, a school demonstrates an eighty percent vaccination rate, vaccinated individuals may no longer be subject to the DESI requirement. I also wanted to provide you with two talking points regarding Convocation Day, so I want to thank all the school board members who were able to attend this year's Convocation Day. I thought Convocation Day was a huge success, and it also emphasized the theme that you're gonna see throughout the school year, which is student voice. We want to empower our students to continue to have a voice, and I was very proud to have Project Three Fifty-One ambassadors welcoming all our staff back with a welcome-back cookie. I want to thank our summer interns who were able to introduce the leadership team, and I also wanted to thank the students from one of the clubs at the high school who spoke up and provided the staff with some insightful insight on how to address students on first day to help alleviate some of those awkward moments. I won't talk about the three school committee members that we recognized that, that morning, Mr. Souza, Mrs. Dougherty, and Mrs. Almeida. I won't talk about recognizing those three members for their outstanding service at the Taunton Public Schools, but if I was to talk about those three outstanding members, I just want to say thank you, and I couldn't think of a better way to recognize those three members for their outstanding service than to recognize them in front of over eight hundred employees, but I won't bore you with those details today. And obviously, I want to take a moment to also thank Marcus and Megan for their first Convocation Day. I thought they did an outstanding job. So thank you. And then I just want to conclude by saying I felt like Santa today as I was able to visit, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven, every classroom in seven of our schools and spending lunch at the high school today with Principal Holcomb. And I also took some time out of the day, I hope you don't mind, to visit my seventh grade teacher at the Old Hemilord Middle School in Far River, who is now a high school teacher in the high school department at Taunton High, who had his last opening day because he'll be retiring at the end of the year. So it was a great day to visit all the classrooms. The kids were very, very excited. The staff were very excited. It was just a great opening day, minus some of the road construction, which caused about a half hour to forty-five minute delay with our buses. But we'll work with our city, we'll work with the DPW to make sure that the buses get in a little earlier. Tomorrow, I plan to visit the Martin Middle School, the East Taunton Elementary School, the Parker Middle School, E-Pole, spend some time at the Taunton Alternative High School, visit a few lunches at the high school, and then next week, I will plan on spending an entire day at the high school and visiting as many staff as I can visit during the day. So with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Receive and place some files.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. He may be looking for some volunteers to go to these lunches with him too, just in case. Just maybe we'll look into that. Next item on the agenda is E, Administrative Business Staffing Report.
Receive and place some files.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is F, Subcommittee Reports. First Subcommittee Report is Secretaries in Assistance Negotiating Team, and from eight twenty-four twenty-one, and that would be Ms. Dougherty.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it very much. I have thoroughly enjoyed serving as chair of TESSA, Secretaries in Assistance, and negotiating with our unions is one of, one of the things that I thoroughly enjoy, so thank you very much for that opportunity. The Secretaries in Assistance had two meetings. We, at our first meeting, agreed to ground rules, and the second meeting, there were just a few items for a one-year agreement that we rapidly came to a close on. That one-year agreement included a pay raise, a promise to return to the table to negotiate the successor agreement for the next three years, probably in February, so that we can get that moving along forward, and then, as I say, a modest pay increase. So I was very pleased to chair, and we were in and out in forty-five minutes. Amazing, a marathon negotiating session. The TESSA folks are a good unit to bargain with, so thank you very much. If I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is, under Subcommittee Reports, is the Rules Subcommittee from today, nine one twenty-one, and that would be Mr. Fiori is the chair.
Thank you. Actually, I think my Taunton Tigers mask looks better than my face does, but you may, may help hearing me, if I take it off. The Rules Subcommittee met this afternoon with myself in the chair and Ms. Dougherty and Mr. Souza as members. Also present were Superintendent Cabral, Assistant Superintendents Moynihan and Barata, Carolyn Bono of, our media specialist, Dr. Cheryl Buck's our Human Resources Director. And first item on, on the agenda was the discussion of the new position of Director of STEM Curriculum, the idea of integrating arts with the science, engineering, and mathematical studies, and also making it pre-K to twelve while we have coordinators at different levels for other subjects. The, we had considerable discussion about it, and revisions included references to Assistant Superintendent in, in the reporting situation would be the Assistant for Curriculum and Instruction. Also, evaluation was to be limited to evaluation of teachers and not assistants. And also was raised the technicality that the school committee had not voted to actually create the position, and yet we were discussing the job description, and so as part of the internals of the Rules Subcommittee, a motion was made and approved to actually create the position and then to forward the job description to second reading. Then we had revised looks at Library Media Specialist and Speech Language Pathologist. They had been in front of us for review a few weeks ago, and Dr. Buck's had made some revisions in line with discussions that had happened at a previous meeting, and so it was voted to advance those as well. And finally, we had a review of a presentation on a Chromebook policy. We lent out Chromebooks all through the system without having a formal contract over the last two years, but studying contracts that other school systems are using, and also our lost book policy. We, we came up with, with one that included replacement costs and valuations of, of any damages and, and just the, the conditions of having the Chromebooks. And that policy was approved as well, and the meeting adjourned.
Motion to accept the report.
Did I hear a second? Mr. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Motion made and seconded to accept the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
No, no, a motion would be in order to advance these policies to their next level of reading.
I would say adopt the whole recommendations of the Subcommittee, which says I was part of it.
Aye.
Motion to adopt recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion, Ms. Dougherty.
Just, just a question. I'm not quite sure what's, what we're voting on here, and as a member of the Subcommittee, I believe that around the position of Director of STEM, that creating the new position, that there should be a motion put forward to the school committee to create that position. Are you going to do that at some point? It's not simply accepting the report because this is a very crucial decision that should be made by the school committee?
So Mr. Fiori, as his first line item, what he's, during his report, he said there was a motion made to, to adopt the position, to create, there was a motion made to create the position. It was part of his report.
So that's, so that is being put before the committee for a vote?
Yes, to adopt the recommendations, which is right now.
Adopt the recommendations. I believe that the motion should be to make a recommendation to the school committee to create the position.
So Mr. Fiori had.
Not, not as a body, not as part of the body of the report, but.
So, so Mr. Fiori, so the, the process is, the, the Rules Subcommittee had a, a, a vote during the Rules Subcommittee, and Mr. Fiori reported out all of the motions that were made during the Rules Subcommittee, and one of those motions was to create the position of the STEM Director Coordinator, whatever it is. So if we adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee, which is now this, there is a motion and a second on the floor, if we, the motion is made to adopt the recommendations, it would adopt all of the motions that were made during that, which he reported out, and that was one of the motions.
If I might continue, I believe that there should be a separate motion put before the committee to create the position.
Yes.
Not as a body, not as part of the report, but.
I'll amend my motion to not include that.
Thank you.
Recommendation, and we'll vote separately.
By, by the way, I just noticed, I, reading my bad handwriting, in addition to creating the position, it was also going to be voted to post the position subject to the final approval of the job description. So if you're gonna do it as a separate motion, please also include the authorization to post.
So my motion will reflect that. I'll amend the motion.
Are the motion accept, to accept the, adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee minus the.
Creation.
Creation of the STEM position and posting. Mr. DeMello on discussion.
I don't think I can vote for that motion, support it, because we have to create the job before we can support the job description. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, it's semantics, really.
No, it's not.
It's semantics, really. What we can do is, we can, we're right in the middle of the Subcommittee Report. What we can do is, we, if, if, if the committee feels that that's the route that they want to go, I can hold this motion to adopt the recommendations, and we can move right to, Mr. Martin can redraw his motion to adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee, and then we can move to create the position now, and then we can go back and adopt the recommendations after, if that's what the committee would like to do. Mr. Martin, I think at this time, the chair will recommend that you withdraw your motion to adopt the recommendations.
Actually, let, let me also withdraw my report, because we're.
The motion has been withdrawn, and the report's been withdrawn to adopt the recommendations. Right now, the chair will ask the wishes of the committee to adopt the position of the, I don't have the paper in front of me.
STEM.
Director of STEM.
Let me make it official so I'll.
Mr. Martin?
I withdraw my motion.
Yep, that's official. And the position would be Director of Curriculum, pre-K to twelve STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, the Arts, and Math.
Move recommendation to approve that position.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second by Mr. Martin.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Fiori, please continue with your report.
Yeah, I would move that the position also be posted for, for filling with the caveat that it is subject to final approval of the school committee because we still have two readings for it.
Some.
That, that, that's a second?
Second.
Second on discussion, Mrs. Almeida.
Given the fact that, you know, we need to expedite some of these positions to get them hired before our term is over, I would ask, respectfully ask that the second and third readings of these motions be suspended and to go ahead and adopt the recommendations of the job descriptions.
So right now, there's a second on the motion, Mr. Fiori's motion. I think that as part of this, as, as this motion stands, the motion was to post the position pending the final approval of the job description, which has to come back, which has to be approved at the second and third reading, and the, and the, and the superintendent agreed that that would be fine because that would give the ball rolling with the draft of the job description. So I, so that's not part of this motion. I think right now it would be okay just to go with what, what the superintendent recommended to the Rules Subcommittee. Is that, is that your understanding, Mr. Fiori?
Yes, and also, if we go ahead with the. Yes, and also, if we go ahead with the adoption of the rest of the report, the other positions are actually already in second reading, so--
Yeah, they're farther along in the agenda for the second reading, so it's just the STEM, the STEAM one that would be the issue. So, there's a motion on the floor to allow the superintendent to post the position pending the final, in the hiring pending the final reading after the third reading. On the motion, all those in favor? Mr. DeMello?
Just a little clarity on that motion. So, are we saying that after today, the second and third reading are waived?
No.
We haven't said that yet.
We'll come back on the 15th of September.
Yep. It's the regular process will be followed. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I have a question.
Who is the opposed? Okay, the chair questions the vote. Please, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Question the vote.
Uh, okay.
I have a question on the vote.
Question the vote?
Yes, I question. Because of the fact that after October 1st, we can't have any new positions. This committee cannot have any new positions. So, that's why I'm asking that we adopt these positions, because they're not going to take effect after--
The chair question, the chair questions, I just couldn't hear what you said.
It's Mass General Law. You can't create a position in the last year of the last term. And that's going to come October 1st, and we need to approve these before October 1st.
The chair will, the chair will rule that, that, my understanding that that's not accurate.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
There's been a discussion with--
It's like a motion to be simple.
With our legal counsel, and that once the election is over, that's a different story. But right now, that, we're still legally bound to--
It's Mass General Law, Mr. Chairman.
We're still legally bound to continue with business. On them, Mrs. Fager. On discussion, because I start--
Yeah, I am on discussion. Mrs. Almeida's right. What we should be doing is waiving the other two things, so we get it done now. You don't want to have conflicts if you stop voting stuff out. We've always known that. We can't vote on anything new from October, November, and December.
So, what we could do is--
We waive what she said. Waive it and just approve it tonight without--
So, what we could do is--
Approve the position tonight.
If that's what the committee would like to do.
And then he can post it.
I don't have a problem. We can vote, we can vote on this, and then we can waive the other two readings and adopt it after that.
That's what she said.
Okay.
But we have to vote on this first. Okay? On the motion that's on the floor, all those in favor?
What's the motion?
Point of clarification, please. What is it that the motion is, please?
Wendy?
To post the position pending final, the final reading on the--
Withdraw the motion.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn. The chair won't entertain any motions at this time.
Instead, I will include that as part of the report of the committee, and then we can adopt the recommendations, and then we can also, at that point, do a waiving of the readings.
So, we're going to include it as part of the Subcommittee's report to adopt the recommendations inside of the Rules Subcommittee report?
Yes.
Go ahead, continue with your report.
All right, well, the report has been given. Again, two positions are, this is already a second reading for, so we're practically not waiving anything. And as far as the third one, I guess we will. And also, we're adopting the Chromebook policy.
So, that was my original motion to accept the--
Go ahead.
My original motion was to accept the recommendation, the, to accept the-- This is what he's going back to.
Okay, Mrs., do I hear a second? Any second for discussion or--
I'll second it.
I hear a second. On the motion to adopt the recommendations of the Rules Subcommittee, once that's adopted, we can then waive the readings of, if that's what the committee wishes, which is what I'm hearing. So, I have Mr. DeMello or then Ms. Doherty.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem waiving the third reading to comply with Mass General Laws, Mrs. Almeida points out, so that would give us September 15th as another day to come back and prove this. I was present at the Subcommittee meeting of Rules, and there were a couple of observations. I pointed out the corrections, so I'd like to see those corrections from us before we make the final determination on this. That's my point.
So, on this, and I don't have a problem with that. So, before I get to Ms. Doherty, I think on this motion, right now, as this motion stands, to adopt the recommendations, which recommendations of the Subcommittee was to allow the superintendent, and there's two other recommendations in there, to allow the superintendent to post the position pending the final approval of the school committee, whether it's, whether we waived the second or the third reading. So, I think if we approve this meeting, this motion, then we can move forward at the next meeting to waive the rules and adopt it fully.
I have a point of order. With regard to the Library Media Specialist and Speech Language Pathologist, the next meeting would be the third reading, so there's no, there would be no need to spend that. We do, we do need to suspend or to create the STEAM position.
Right. What I'm, I'm talking right now about the STEAM position, because the other two positions are, the second reading is farther along in the agenda. So, I'm just talking about the STEAM position as part of, because he's got the other motions, which is to move the other, advance the other two job descriptions. So, right now, Wendy, could you just read it one more time as we take the vote?
To adopt the recommendation of the Rules Subcommittee, which is the last one.
Right, which includes, which part of it is the recommendation to allow the superintendent to post the position pending the final approval of the Super, of the School Committee. And then if we want to waive the readings, that's fine. I'll do it at the next meeting. That's fine. But I think we just, this is just the first time. On the motion and the second to adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Approved. Okay, I'm going to move along. The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Law Subcommittee, 9121, Chairman Martin.
Hopefully, this will be a little clearer. Financial Law Subcommittee met earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Fiore, and Mr. Souza. We had four items on the agenda. The first one was for student activities, and we didn't have any. I'm sure this, now that school is back, we'll probably start to see that category being replenished, replenished. Second item, Mr. Monahan gave an update. We have closed out FY '21 with a final report for the appropriation. We've closed out '21, FY '21, with a report for revolving, and we've closed out FY '21, a final report for grants. So, in essence, '21 is history. And all you have to do now is do the end of year report eventually for the, for the state. So, that was item number two, and that passed unanimously with the Financial Law Subcommittee. Item number three, bills payable. First one was for the year that we were in, FY '22, in the amount of $493,158.68. And the second one was for FY '21, which in the past was known as the encumbrance list. And as Ms. Monahan pointed out, there are things that we buy in May and June that we don't pay for in, prior to the year closing, because the product hasn't come in. And, you know, we're not going to pay for something that we don't have. So, we put them on what we call an encumbrance list. Well, the encumbrance list has been finalized. City Hall has approved it, the city auditor. I believe she did it last night or the, or last week. So, FY '21 encumbrance list is in the amount of $556,460.15. And again, that's the materials that we bought in FY '21. That at the time FY '21 closed, they hadn't been delivered yet. So, they will be, maybe some of them have been delivered, and we'll show pay the bill, and we still may be waiting on some to be delivered. And when those items come in, we will pay that bill, and we're authorized to pay that bill based on what we do tonight. So, Mr. Souza made a motion. I think he put both warrants together to pay the, to pay the two warrants. And I don't have that figure, but I do have the separate figure. So, a motion was made to pay FY '22 and FY '21. FY '22 in the amount of, whoop, I got it right here. The two warrants together are $1,049,610.83. And that passed the Financial Law Subcommittee. So, any questions on that? And finally, Ms. Monahan, I'm going to let her do this. Mr.--
Thank you, Chairman. I'm Chairman Souza. Just for clarity, I just wanted to be clear on FY '21 and FY '22. The FY '21, the $556,460.15, is non-encumbrance. It's been spent, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's--
Well, we used to refer to as an encumbrance list.
I just wanted to be clear on that. And when the motion comes up, if I could ask, if we split up the FY '21 and FY '22 and not make it as that million, whatever it is, we can do individual motions to approve the FY '21 payable and FY '22 payable, appreciate that.
Will do.
Thank you.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I have a question on the grants accounts, final report.
Okay.
So, most of the grants that are reported here are expired on June 30th, 2021, which has passed. And some of them have substantial balances. So, what happens to those balances?
Carryover.
Correct. They do carry over to the next fiscal year. Like, one specifically, you can say the Title I grant, that has a grant balance of $900,000, and that will go ahead and roll over to the next fiscal year. So, some say that specifically, say that the grant ends, but some of the grants will move over fiscally to the next school year.
So, some of them, so the Title I, Title II, Title III grants would do that, because they re-upped on a regular basis. But there are other grants that are not so specific, that have balances that are carried forth. So, what happens to those balances?
What happens is on some of them, as you, although there is a June 30th deadline or end date, the FR I, which is the final report that we report to the state or to the federal, to the federal government, is that we will have that time to spend the rest of that fund. So, it can say that it does end on June 30th. But again, we usually have a grace period to file that last report to finish off the, the rest of the funding.
If I may add, one of the pet peeves that Ms. Almeida-- One of the pet peeves that Ms. Almeida had was when she saw the state of Massachusetts as a vendor receiving money, and whoever was in charge of that particular grant didn't spend it all, but was supposed to, and they had to turn it back. So, we try to avoid that by all possible methods, so that we don't give money back to the state when we could clearly use it. So--
So, yeah, so, I mean, everyone has this in their hands, so you can see which grants have expired and not. And so, I, just picking one off the top of the second sheet, the PLTW Martin-Friedman Implementing Science Curriculum Grant expires or ends June 30 with a carryover balance of $17,000, which is about half of the budget that was appropriated. So, I mean, I understand the pandemic, probably, we didn't expend money as fast as we would under ordinary circumstances. But what happens to that $17,000? Does that get turned back to the grant?
I think we should direct that to the superintendent, please.
Could you handle this when you were Assistant Superintendent?
That's why I have gray hair. So, as Mrs. Monahan mentioned, the grants that you see here, where they start and then they, we, this, kind of like with the October 1 report, the October 1 report is not due on October 1. It's actually due towards the end of October, early November. So, we do have a reporting timeline where we can expend funds that are not expended and roll them over into the next fiscal year. So, these funds will be rolled over into fiscal '22.
And spent.
And spent.
All of them? Every single grant that expired in July and August?
I don't want to be, come back and be accused of lying, but our objective with the grants is to spend them down to zero. In some cases, we overspend them and then charge back to the appropriation to make sure we spend those lines down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Mr. Martin?
So, the bills payable is, as I pointed out, that was approved by the Finance and Law Subcommittee. And the last item on the agenda was facilities update, and I want to do justice on that, so I'm going to let Ms. Monahan go over that, because she has done a lot of, a lot of work regarding facilities this past summer. So, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. As I stated in the Finance and Law meeting, I do want to recognize people who are behind the scenes that we don't normally see doing the work, because like as of today, we opened up our schools this afternoon, this morning, and everything was cleaned and sanitized by our custodians. Our groundskeepers have worked quite hard, quite a bit throughout our schools to beautify the entrances. They put flowers in there to welcome our students, just those little things. And, and so, I, and of course, not only that, our supplies were delivered by our two storekeepers. So, there are a lot of people behind the scenes getting everything ready for our schools, where we don't really know too much about them. So, I do want to say thank you to our three groundskeepers doing 12 school buildings, getting everything ready. And with this rain, they said that they will be mowing for days in years to come, possibly. The Taunton Alternative High School is now at Hopewell, and again, another huge project that was done behind the scenes in a very short period of time. It was amazing to see a group effort of just about a dozen people, where they moved furniture to the third floor, where we are not going to be using it, and then cleaning the building, and then moving the desks from the Alternative High School to Hopewell. So, again, I want to thank Pete, Nick, Greenie, Manny, Nick, Murph, Dave, and Mark, thanking them, all their hard work for helping. And of course, Principal Delaney for assisting in this whole move. So, I thank them again for that work. The Taunton High School Athletic Field, the school committee has gone ahead and said that we can go forward to see about the project. I met with Arsene from NESRA, and he did say that it will take about three months for him to prepare the documents for us to go out to bid, to have the replacement of the turf field at Taunton High School and also of the track. So, that puts us in line to go out to bid in November, and then with all that timeline, begin work on that field in the spring. And so, Athletic Director Mark Otto-Vianelli is already working ahead of time to schedule practices and games and meets in other locations, so we can go ahead and have a beautiful facility come fall. And lastly, the last, two weeks ago, the city building inspector and Captain Bassis from our fire department went through all of our schools to do an inspection, and there were 40 sightings on our schools. But what was nice to see were there, there was only three sightings that Taunton Public Schools had to correct. And that is because, of course, the hard work of all of our principals and our custodians of getting our schools ready to go. And all those three things that were cited have already been taken care of. So, kudos again to people behind the scenes and helping our schools getting ready. And that concludes my facilities report.
Thank you. And just for people's knowledge, prior to COVID, we had appropriated out of revolving approximately $2 million, somewhere in that vicinity, to do the athletic field. Once COVID came along, everything got put on hold. The money got put back into the revolving fund. So, we're not taking it twice. We took it once, we put it back because of what was going on. And now, we're going to move forward, hopefully, with getting it done again. And to tell you how things change, we have a rough estimate as to how much it's gone up.
It's been up about two, I think it was $200,000.
About $200,000, just by putting it on hold. So, you know, if you're listening out there, TV land, you know, if you go to Home Depot a year and a half ago, you could buy a two-by-four for less than a dollar. Now, it's like four or five dollars, and that's the cheapest two-by-four you could probably buy. Everything is just crazy.
That's a warp two-by-four, too.
It's a warp two-by-four. So, that's the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
So, the first thing I'm going to do is ask for a, a, accept, to accept the report. Then what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask, the next motion would be adopt the, adopt the recommendations.
We want to get Mr.--
Yeah, I think what I'll do is accept the report, and then the only recommendations is the warrant. So, I will split them up, and we'll do those outside of the, outside of the, outside of the report. So, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the report.
So moved.
Motion made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The chair will now entertain a motion to accept the bills payable warrant FY '21 in the amount of $556,000. in the amount of $556,460.15. Mr. DeMello?
Sorry.
Do I hear a motion?
We need to have the motion before we can discuss.
Yeah, we need, we need a motion so we can, I can call it.
I'd move approval of the 2021 warrant.
Move approval of the FY21.
Sir?
Motion made and seconded to approve the FY21 warrant. Mr. DeMello, on discussion.
So, two comments. On page 19, voucher 1637, the amount of $67.23 gets tax supplies. What exactly is that? I don't remember seeing this measure.
Mrs. Monahan?
Page 19.
Second one down.
So what that would be is you- Sorry, that is considered the tag grant, which is going to be items that they are going to need for supplies in one of our schools using the tag grant funds.
What's the acronym for tag? Target, is this grant? And my second comment is, I don't know if this is FY21, but maybe it is. On page 12, I wanted to respectfully vote present on voucher number-
Take it easy, Marcus.
Voucher number 16333, the amount of $999.15.
Is that part of?
Oh, the first one?
Who made the motion?
Yep.
To accept?
Fiore.
Is that part of your motion, Mr. Fiore?
Sure.
To, okay, to record Mr. DeMello as present on that particular-
Get that, Wendy. Page 12 at the top. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next, the chair will-
We did 21.
That was 21.
Yes, we need to do 22.
Yes. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills payable warrant FY22 in the amount of $493,150.68.
So move.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, committee. Moving on to item G, new business, director of special education hiring update. See the enclosure. Superintendent Cabral?
Thank you, Chairman Souza. So in your packet, I provided you with an update from the Human Resource Department, who is overseeing the hiring process with the new special education director. So I just wanted to make you aware that we will follow the same process that we've used in the past when hiring the previous two directors of special education. The process that we followed in the past was very successful, was very comprehensive. The Human Resource Department will develop a screening committee that will be comprised of school committee members, leadership team members, administrators, educators, parents, and other stakeholders from groups invested in our school system. The director of special education was advertised internally and externally on August 11th, 2021. Once the advertising period has concluded, individual files containing each candidate's credentials along with a screening rubric will be available for members of the screening committee to review in the Human Resource Office. In the past, school committee members have also reviewed each prospective candidate's file. My office will be pleased to coordinate, or the Human Resource Office will be pleased to coordinate this effort with any school committee member who wishes to schedule a time to review the applicant pool. Below, the Human Resource Office has also provided the action steps that they will follow throughout the hiring process with dates and times to be determined in the very near future. So again, the Human Resource Office will form a screening committee. The Human Resource Office will meet with members of the screening committee to explain the candidate review process. The Human Resource Department and screening committee will analyze the recommendations and contact applicants to schedule preliminary interviews. The Human Resource Department and members of the screening committee will hold preliminary interviews. The Human Resource Department and members of the screening committee will analyze each candidate's strengths and areas of growth. The Human Resource Department will schedule final interviews with screening committee and recommend a candidate or candidates to the superintendent to interview. The Human Resource Department will schedule interviews with the superintendent of school, schools. The superintendent will recommend a candidate or candidate to the school committee to interview, and the Human Resource Department and the superintendent will schedule the final interviews with the school committee at a future date. So as we approach the final interview with the school committee, the recommended interview process, sample guidelines, and candidate materials will be shared to assist each member throughout the interview process. So we want to, the Human Resource Department wants to thank you for entrusting them with this very important matter, and they look forward to working with all of you as we prepare to onboard a future director of special education.
Mr. Martin and Mrs. DeMello?
I don't know if that's in the memorandum that you put on, I can't remember. But names will not be released until we have a final group to pick from.
Yes, part of, part of the process, which is, I believe, would be under bullet 2, the Human Resource Department will go over the confidentiality portion.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, the superintendent recommends, the school committee votes up or down. So the school committee does not recommend. Superintendent recommends, school committee votes up or down, the president of superintendent recommends. Mr. DeMello, did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, a question I have. Screening committee comprised of school committee members, how does the Human Resource Department develop this comprehensive list of school committee members?
So, we'll be reaching out to each school board member to see who's interested in serving.
And what is the maximum amount of school committee members we can have?
We cannot have a quorum. So we, can only be four, I believe?
Right. Doesn't have to be four, but up to four.
Up to four, up to four. And so, for example, we have eight members. If the Human Resource Department reaches out to the first four members, and they all express interest in being part of the screening committee, then the other four are eliminated automatically?
Yes.
Well, I would-
How are we doing this election?
Yeah, I would-
A comprehensive screening committee comprised-
Yeah, we'll reach out to everyone and see who's interested, because I'm, there may be some board members who may not be interested. And if you have more than four, we'll talk and come up with a rational reason to see who would serve on, as we've done in the past. Because some have greater interest in this position than others, and some may feel that they don't want to serve on this because they've, one, maybe they're not running, and they feel like it's better for the people who plan on running and being here in the future to serve on this committee. So, again, that reduces the number, and there may be people who feel that this is something they would entrust to board members with more seniority, or again, more board members, board members who are very passionate about this and wish to serve. So we'll, we'll get a head count on who's interested, and we'll come up with the four who will serve on this.
One more thing, Mr. Chairman. On the final stages with the interviews with the school committee, although we have a parent involvement at one of the levels with the screening committees, is there an opportunity for parents to also be in attendance during the interviews? Because the screening committee ultimately whittles down to top three, top four, whatever it may be, and then when they come before the school committee, then there's no parent input. I'm concerned about that.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello, are you talking about the interview process when it comes before the school committee or prior?
Well, prior, we know we have a comprehensive list of parents and other stakeholders.
Right.
So there's an initial parent involvement at the very initial whittling down applicants, correct?
Correct. So, parents, parents and stakeholders, as I've served on these in the past, will be involved in the interview process up until it gets to the school committee. When it gets to the school committee, the meeting is actually, or the interview process is actually done during a public meeting, similar to when you appointed me.
So, there will be an opportunity for public input, which is, of course, standard at our meetings. But I just want parents to understand that they're not excluded if they're not part of the initial comprehensive list of these members that are part of the screening committee. Because ultimately, I, I think at the, when we whittle down the candidates, that's when we, we have the meat and the bones, and we want to make sure we have the right candidate, and sometimes, a parent's observation, a parent's input that is not part of the initial process can help guide us. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, and my, if my memory, I'm just trying to think back to some of these other meetings where a school committee had to interview candidates for positions like this, whether or not public input was allowed. And I don't remember public input being allowed.
I think that would be something that, that, because it's a job interview, I don't think that that's going to be legal. But, but I think, I think during the process, anyone, that people that want to serve, like stakeholders and special ed people and all of that, would be involved. Those are all parents.
Right. And that's why I brought it up, because I, I'm pretty much aware that we don't allow public input at that final stage. So I want to make sure we do allow public input at that final stage. Because I think it's critical that we have a different perspective of parents, not just school committee members.
Yeah, so I think what we'll do is we'll ask legal counsel on that, whether that's allowable or not, but I think-
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, I don't think we need legal counsel for this. I think we would make that decision.
No, well, first of all, it's, I, I, I don't have a tendency to disagree with you, but certainly it's because the process has to be fair and open, at an open meeting, that we're always guided by what the law is, not someone's interpretation of the law. So we have eight members, and there's eight different interpretations. I don't, I want to make sure that we're following the letter.
If I could just make a comment, and I understand, Mr. DeMello, I really do understand wanting public input, but we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we may have some internal employees who are applying. We may have people who are employed in other school systems who are applying. And if something inappropriate, not that I'm saying it would happen, but if something inappropriate is stated, and our good friend Desmond happens to write it in the Gazette, now anyone who's ever doing any research or looking up any of these candidates for any future employment, that may be seen as a detriment to future employment. So I, I agree with what you're saying, and I understand why you're saying it. But I also think we need to be careful that we are, we could be jeopardizing someone's ability to earn a livelihood in the future if they didn't get this position, or if something negative was said there in public input.
I think at that point there, that's kind of the point I was making, is that that point there, we'd hold the city or the district liable, so we have to be careful on that. And I think what we'll do is we'll ask legal counsel to walk us through the process on that, and make sure that that's, you know, and, and, and I think your input to make sure that there's parents involved is certainly-
Right, but as a school committee member, as a member of the public, I can also make statements regarding the candidate, right? That could, I mean, we're at the final stages at this point, that's what I'm asking. It's at the very final stages. If we only bring one candidate before us, I want to make sure that candidate is the right fit for Taunton Public Schools. Because for the last two and a half years on this committee, my number one issue has been special education. And I want to make sure this is not, this is going to be, how should I say? The right fit for the school system going forward.
I think what we'll-
Whether I'm here in January or not, I want to make sure it's the right fit.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll get a written process from legal counsel to make sure that the process is being followed, that we're not holding the district liable for any misstatements or anything like that from the public and things like that. But certainly, stakeholders will be involved, and the public, parents will be involved. Mrs. Almeida?
We have never had public input at the committee. Number one. Two, what is the timeline for this one?
It'll be presented at a later time. It will be presented in the near future.
Near future?
It'll be presented at a later time. It'll be presented in the near future.
So, the item be before or around December, or will it be after December?
I anticipate it'll be done before December.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Mr. Cabral, you're, we're all set. Any other questions on this item? Was that, was that, Mrs. Doherty, did you have your, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please, thank you. I missed the exchange between Mrs. Almeida and the superintendent. I think, Mrs. Almeida, you asked about timeline, is that what you did? Okay, that was one of my questions, and I didn't quite get your response.
The timeline will be presented at a later time. It's still being worked out.
So, this document that we have, thank you for putting it together, Cheryl, says that the job was advertised internally and externally on August 11th. I'm assuming they weren't advertised simultaneously. Could you do 10 days internally? Is that the requirement? And then, I mean, how does that work? And if you don't get anyone internal to apply, you go to an external, or do you do-
No, they were posted at the same time internally and externally. That is what I asked the Human Resource Department to do, to post them internally and externally to cast a very broad net.
So, and the second thing is, and just thinking about more public input, I guess, it seems to me, I don't know whether it was for the superintendent's position in the transition between Dr. Hackett and the new superintendent, who happens to be you, superintendent, that we reached out to the public to ask, or maybe it was in my dreams, and maybe we can ask what, what folks believe would be the highest expect, their expectation for this position. What would you like to see in the director of special education? And try to get input upfront in that regard so that when the screening committee meets, they can be looking at what people are thinking. And so it would then frame the questions, perhaps, that will be asked of the candidates as they, as they come forward. So that's one way of maximizing participation and having people feel like they have at least a voice somewhere along the way. And the second, the next question, and my last one, is how large, how large do you see this screening committee to be?
I'm thinking back to when I served on the last one. We had probably about 12 to 15 people. It was pretty comprehensive.
Yes, I've served on a couple of screening committees for school principals, one for the Chamberlain Principal many years ago, some years ago, not that many. And it was quite a, quite a large group. There were teachers, there were parents that participated, school committee members that participated as well. And so, at least 12 or 15 people, as you pointed out, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. Any other questions on this item? Thank you. Moving on to new business item two, mitigation strategies in the event of oppressive heat. I think we've gone by that already, but we'll have to wait and see. Superintendent Cabral?
So I was asked to place this item on the agenda as a topic of discussion. So I know there are, there are spurts where we do have pretty oppressive, or some intensive heat. I think back to, I think it was my first opening day as superintendent, where we actually let the students go home. We had an early release because the heat temperature indexes indicated that the, I think the temperature index would be around 115 degrees. So we had an early release day. So, but in the past, when temperatures have been at high levels, but levels that did not require students to be dismissed or students to stay home with a canceled school, we have provided cooling stations, we have allowed students to go outside, sit in the shade. We've let buildings kind of work it out internally to find areas in the school for students to stay and staff to remain cool throughout the day. So I anticipate that we'll continue to do the same. However, I would not hesitate to cancel school or have an early release if the temperatures warranted that we had to do that, similar to how we cancel or have early release days for snow. So if there's any other questions that I could answer from anyone on the group, I'd be happy to, but I think it's one of those items where I think you trust me to make the right decision on behalf of our students and our kids.
Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is H, unfinished business action item updates. The first item, the item number one, is job descriptions for a second reading. Library media specialist.
We already did that.
No, we approved, no, we, no, what we did was, we approved the updated job descriptions. So now, this is, this is to move it to a sec, this is a second reading. So the chair will entertain a motion to, to approve the-
Move it forward to the third reading.
Thank you. There, second. Second, thank you. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Speech-language pathologist, same process?
Yes, same procedure.
There, a second.
Second.
Thank you. Second, motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number two, MASC policy revisions, recommendations. See enclosure. Nomination to serve on the ad hoc committee. Now, we had three members that served on the ad hoc committee for the policy revisions ongoing. I recommend those same three people do it, continue to do it for this, because this is just an update to that. Now, would those three people be willing to serve currently from now on? Mrs. Fagan, Ms. Doherty, and Mrs. Almeida? That's a good question. Anytime you want. Anytime you want.
When the group is available to get together.
It's not immediately, because we have all the documents from the MASC, I can't think of his name.
Jim Hardy.
Jim Hardy, thank you. Would you, I don't, Mrs. Almeida, you're all set, you'd be willing to serve to finish that up? Thank you. If the, I don't think we need to appoint them, they've already been an ongoing ad hoc for that, I think we'll just continue to do it. Thank you, thank you all, I appreciate the service. Next item under the agenda, Department of Education, Department of Public Health masking update, see the enclosure. So this is just to, any questions on the document that was presented in the packet on the masking policy update or moving forward with that? Now it's actually law, so. Mr. Palowski on the masking.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairperson. So we mentioned in the policy that on October first, there would be the option of, you know, removing the mask.
Could you just speak into your mic? It's tough to hear you.
Sorry, sorry.
Or take your mask off, one of the two?
Yep, got it. It mentioned on October first, there would be the ability of removing the mask requirement if a school had achieved eighty percent vaccination. So my question would be, how would we ascertain that a school had achieved eighty percent vaccinations? Is there going to be like a survey?
No, that was our question yesterday when we had the call with the commissioner, and he informed us that that information would be shared with us at a later meeting.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I will say is, I think even up there, it's ongoing. Any other questions? Thank you. Action items on the action item list, item four. Just a reminder on everyone's schedule, the twenty-third, September twenty-third, the dedication for Dick Johnson to the Oakland Complex.
I would just have a question on item two dated two-five, two thousand twenty, and item five dated eight-eleven-twenty-one. They appear to be the same.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts on that? Because I think he's right. I think we could strike both of them, because it's gone to the ad hoc committee, and that's what we want, because that means it's moving forward now at the school committee.
And then we can.
Ball's in motion.
And then we can have, keep it on the agenda as an unfinished item.
Any thoughts? Mrs. DeMello?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just consolidate two-five-twenty and eight-eleven-twenty-one, just maybe one.
Why don't we strike the two-five-twenty and just keep the eight-eleven?
That's my recommendation.
Great minds think alike. I think we'll strike, the chair will entertain a motion to strike two-five-twenty, combine it with eight-eleven-twenty-one onto the.
Second.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you. Mr. DeMello.
Chairman, I'd like to add a action item request. A few months ago or weeks ago, I requested information regarding the key card for Central Office. I don't know where we stand on that.
Regarding what?
The procurement card for Central Office, specifically probably one in your name and another designated.
Yep.
Yeah, actually, Mrs. Moynihan and I spoke about that, I think I want to, I want to say shortly after that meeting. Mr. DeMello, so we'll provide you with an update at the next school committee meeting, and we'll have, we'll add it to this.
So not necessary to be on the action item list?
No, we'll put it on the action item list. I'll just say, when I was the assistant superintendent, I did attempt to secure one, and I know Mrs. Moynihan has reached out to the city when she first started, so we'll reach out to them again, because we do need their approval through the treasurer's office and the auditor's office.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Wendy, Wendy could, so Wendy, did you get that? We're going to strike two-five-twenty, combine it with eight-eleven-twenty, then add the procurement card, and Wendy will be able to provide you with the exact wording on what that is, what's in there. And just put pending on that, on the right column. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is executive session. The chair will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Massachusetts Nurses Association pursuant to exemption three of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, and then to reconvene in open session. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session under those conditions? Motion made, wait a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, a roll call vote. Mrs. Fagan.
Mrs. Darity?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear her. Sorry. Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Chairman Souza.
Yes. We're in executive session, Marcus, we will be back. Thank, thank you.
Second.
Motion made to command of executive session and seconded. Mrs. Fagan, please call the roll.
Mrs. Darity?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Almeida? Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Chairman Souza.
Yes. There was one motion made in the executive session to approve the one-year successor agreement with the Mass Nurses Association. There was a motion, we will, we will repeat that motion here in open session. Mrs. Almeida, please make the motion.
To approve the contract with the nurses.
And Mr. Pal, Mr. DeMello seconded it.
Second, yes.
On the motion, please call the roll, Mrs. Fagan.